You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I'll make a motion, we put the minutes for October 9th, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Make a motion to approve non-public meeting 1, 2, and 3 on October 9th.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Anything further, Michael?
No.
All in favor say aye.
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 Public input. Chairman?
Yeah, um, thank you. I wanted to speak there with the Keensville Riders Stonebill Club. We manage the trail system that runs from Swansea up to Westmoreland and all the way up to Gilson and Sully. We had three projects that we submitted for this year. And we submitted these, we have a $1,000 bond for any work fees on the trails as well as a $100 filing fee. We submitted projects that are in three towns on the trail system for this year. The state objected that because you have to file the separate application for each town that you realize it is a town. Unfortunately, the Stonebill Club came front of $3,000 for three separate applications. So my request is that the town of Swansea would fund that $1,000 refundable bond, plus the $100 filing fee for two washouts on the northern end of actually the trail just south of the actual. So work could be performed by a contractor. It should be completed by the end of the year. Once the work is complete, we need to notify the state about full completion of the project. They'd want the money.
This would be funded from the rail trailer advisory committee's budget. He spoke to Mr. Wall different. I think they have their money allocated, but it sounds like it's probably just going to be a temporary while the bond is, while the bond is posted. You said you were hoping to have the work done before the end of the year. So if that comes to fruition, they'll kind of wash out when the money comes back. Sounds like a good opportunity to make progress on a couple of smaller washouts.
Not too hard to figure out. I'll make that motion that we allow that to happen.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jimmy.
We're jealous. I'll talk to you tomorrow, Marissa.
Okay.
Thank you for that information.
Any other public input? Anybody online, Garrett? You know, they start off with their appointments. Stratton Library Trustees, 2025 budget replus. Look to the chair if you like.
Somebody come out and sit next to me.
If you like to have somebody sitting next.
Somebody sit next to me.
Pull a chair if you want.
You gotta have your support behind you.
There's any questions? This is an 11% increase over last year's budget, but last year's budget is a 70% decrease. So we're not asking for.
On the three-year average for.
What's the budgeting for repair and maintenance?
Well, we're hoping, we're expecting that we may have to spend money for a survey for the boundary lines by the library. We want some kind of solution in the cellar for the troughs that are collecting water and a lot of humidity in the basement. The addition. So it's causing mold and so forth from this items that are being stored down there. And winterizing the library so that there's, it's easier to heat and hopefully cool. Because we also want to put some air conditioning in there for next year.
So what's the issue with the basement? Is there a sump pump there?
There's a sump pump, but a dehumidifier, but it's just not keeping up.
What do we think is needed?
Well, they did install somewhat of a French drain, but they didn't really complete it and really didn't do it to a very high standard. So it seems like we need to get that resolved. Ideally, get some covers of some kind over the troughs and have it so drained better to the sump pump. We installed a cover over the sump pump to try to cut down on evaporation. But it still seems to be a very moist area. Actually, much of the summer when we didn't have rain, it was fine. But when we have rain, quite a bit of water comes in. And I'm not sure if that's the same budget item, but we had a lot of burner issues last winter.
Yeah, that's another, that's equipment and repair.
We're hoping we'll be a little better off this year.
So what prompted my question was having gone through a boundary line adjustment and the costs that were incurred for that, which were relatively minor work. $2,000 doesn't seem like it's going to address either of those. Either the foundation issue or basement issue or the survey. I mean, yeah, the survey. So is it possible that you could try to get some estimates ahead of time before this is finalized? So you know what your actual costs are going to be? That's one question. The second question is with the lack of progress through no one's fault, to be able to achieve either an easement or a boundary line adjustment. It would be, in my opinion, premature to consider a mini split system for 2025. Especially without there being an estimate at least. And the estimate could be based on something we can't do without eminent domain. So just from my perspective, seems like there's some work that you could do that would be beneficial to you.
Well, I know that Stephon came over and looked.
Right.
Right? And I don't know if we heard it and think that.
Well, he was looking, I think he had a number of ideas on what to do to put many sports in. And I think he was looking at kind of a two-tier system. One unit, the one room, and another one. Actually, I think that somehow involved a chimney. But I don't have.
I don't think he moved forward because he's waiting on the boundary line issue.
Right.
I think makes his decision on what to do. Difficult.
That side door where you met me, is that used as anything other than an emergency egress? Was there any discussion about bringing the lines out on that side and bringing them onto that landing where the condensing unit could be? Because if that, I don't even know if it's possible, but if that was done, you wouldn't need an easement or a boundary line adjustment.
Yeah, I don't have that boundary line that in front of me. There actually, I don't think was very much.
It was like nothing.
Land by the library even on that side.
Yeah, there's about a foot.
Yeah.
There's about a foot with your railing.
Right.
And that potentially is enough to bring the lines out and run them along the building. I don't know.
Yeah.
Around the lines of the whole building. Condenser broke. My only concern would be what comes off the roof there at the winter.
I think that could be handled by, it may not be the most aesthetically pleasing, but if we're not getting cooperation in order to avoid eminent domain through that process, it should be worth, I think, looking into as to whether it could be done.
I still think the boundary line needs to be addressed though. Sometime. For sure. Hopefully in my lifetime. Because one part of the over the half their driveway.
Right.
So it'd be nice to. Especially if they have something. But if it's not going to. It's going to keep us from getting air conditioners sooner rather than later.
Well, we'd be willing to work with you to help facilitate the discussion, but you've got to get them to the point where they're willing to talk about it.
Can you explain it to me just a little of the boundary line? I'm not lost on that. I'm not above that. On the boundary line, is it too close to the building? Then we need more space. As the people that own the other part, we have to negotiate with them.
They did, yeah, they didn't realize that they don't own their driveway. When they purchased their home, reached the town a few years.
It's weird, there's a little rectangleous shape that's their driveway. Good part of their driveway.
And we need that to put a condenser for space, is that what you're saying?
No, we need, they own, the way the building is, we are breaking, the building is built like right on the boundary line. We would, ideally, the place to put the condenser would be at the back of the building, but they own like right up to there. When the addition was added. When the addition was added, there was no leeway there. And so we were negotiating to maybe take a little bit, but this, that whole area back there is where their children play. So they've got their play structure, they've got all of their stuff back there. But then it also turns out, I believe, what we think is their well might, it's also like right very close on the side part. So there's a lot of unknowns in it. And so I've been in contact with them and trying to, we did have one meeting with them and offered up some options. And then they wanted to offer up some other options, but then it hasn't gotten any further. So I'm having difficulty getting them to have another meeting.
So is the idea to adjust the boundary line so that their driveway is on their property?
Their driveway and taking a very small bit enough around to do what we needed to do. In fact, I think we were maybe going to be getting less of it.
Right.
We were going to be losing.
But we've engaged some property at the very end of the building, which would be an ideal location to put the unit in for the air conditioning.
Got you. Yeah, the exhaust pipe actually extends out to their property.
From the furnace.
From the furnace.
Yeah.
Does, would we own this line? How did this come about? How did we find out afterwards, say buckle in? How did it?
Well, we've always known, we've, I don't know how long we've known. I mean, when the previous owner sold it, we knew that we owned it. We're back in minutes, a long time. I think when Stinson's was holding the property, we brought it up. That the realtor hadn't disclosed.
Haven't seen Lolly Smith in years. Yeah.
Jimmy, that's why it's important to have a good realtor when you buy something.
Should you ever have a need. That's it, forget it.
I think they want to double the budget.
I think they want, I think they want to drop by 7%. So anyway, I think those things would be helpful for you in order to be able to afford the survey, afford the cellar work. And we should work collaboratively with Michael to try to stimulate that process.
Follow up periodically, try not to.
I know, and I don't know if maybe I'm not the person anymore. If we, maybe something needs to come officially.
Need someone be there. But I think.
Well, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm just, or more official than me just saying, hey. We want to be good neighbors. Yeah, we want to be neighbors. They're library patrons, I don't want to set the neighborhood.
I think we're probably ready for another meeting to sit down and at least plan out a timeline and the process. Try to get this resolved. It's been going on for so long now.
Yeah. Was it this time last year or was it this spring?
I think it was a year.
I think it was about this time last year.
Can I go back to the cellar floor, the French drain that we're talking about? So basically, did they cut a trench along the edge of the foundation and bleed into the sump pump?
They did.
And when you say it wasn't finished, did they continue with the?
It doesn't go around the whole perimeter. There's one section of wall where there is no trench.
Okay.
So it's kind of on, most of it is on two parallel sides. And does flow towards a sump pump.
Yeah. What size humidifier do you have down there now?
I was wondering if we needed something bigger.
These humidifiers work pretty good because I have to put them in my cellar, my pump houses. And I had one in there and the guy came and I thought, it ain't working. And all of a sudden he said, Jimmy, you got to have the right size of right diameter. And if you weigh that out of how much space you have to the humidifier, that could solve the problem. And the evaporation is a big point where you could put covers over the French drain and the sump pump. I did it all and it worked beautifully. And it was just a matter of me getting the right humidifier for the area, to cover that area. So does the humidifier drain into the sump pump?
It does.
Yeah. I think we should take, I would like to see us take a peek at that too. Because that could save quite a bit of money if that solves the problem. You know what I mean?
Right. But I think we also have somewhat of an issue with water kind of moving up through the concrete floor.
There is a crack in the middle.
So I think that kind of adds to the humidity as well.
When the water table goes up?
Yeah.
Do I see some?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. When it's raining, there's plenty of water in the trough.
Yeah.
In the drains.
Yeah.
Around, you know, near the walls.
Did you ever go down there and see it yourself?
No.
I'm one of those realtors, I don't do big.
You're welcome, many times we will.
I think I'm going to take a ride over just so you can show me so I can physically see what we're talking about.
Especially since you have experience in some more situations.
Oh, yeah, I have a lot of depth to sump pumps and all that. That's great. I'd love to come down and take a peek. It's all right. I'll ask Michael, Michael will set it up.
Tuesdays and Thursdays, 2:30 to 4:00.
2:30 to 7:00.
Michael goes, I like Michael, I give Michael a lot, he'll take a road trip with me.
But I can also.
For the price of one, it's all libraries.
Well, Jimmy, it's also right around the corner too. So it doesn't have to be when we're open, I can make an arrangement.
That was on our plan, but we never got to that. So we'll make sure we move it up on our plan.
Sure.
So should this be operating budget or CIPC? I think the mini splits would be CIPC, but I don't know about the others. You know, what the other costs. I think budget.
Thinking budget for survey.
And if Jim and Michael conclude that, I'm more concerned about that crack in the cement.
We'll take a look at that bill because if that only happens when the water table's up, we can fix that. We can figure out that. But I think we could save a lot of money, Bill, on that end. So you could have the money for what you said we needed more, right? These are the properties.
Do they have gutters on the building? Great gutters?
I don't believe so. Yeah, in the roof line is what you think that, the condenser would be. There's a lot of coming.
And I don't know, I mean, I don't know if that affects, we're on the store thing, so for just, so I don't know. Because she just bought it, I don't know. We put gutters on the store. There are, there are. And you can get gutters. We just put brand new gutters. Okay, yeah. So we went about the big tubes to the mini splits. We did two. Yes, they had, I'm going to come back. South side of the building. I think if it involves. Yeah, I believe that safety. Same line, I don't think.
Somebody online, Garrett?
There is someone next to the town.
I didn't know if you had any assistance.
That's the doors we're talking about. Boom, and the sign, my head, I was trying to sex her. I didn't, I don't want to.
We'll let you.
See, I just thought you said.
Supplies? What you're budgeting is less than what you've utilized through September?
We aren't going to need the catalog of carvings. We're going to need some of our own ones. We just thought, I'm not sure, did we just leave that? We left it, I think, at what we budgeted last year. Yeah. I think I had bought some checks last year for that, for the expense of printing.
Well, in '23, you were at 19. Last year, you came in 500 under and you're 700 over. And still have afforded to account for.
Oh, I think that the 877, that was a cart that we had not, yeah, we hadn't planned on and we wouldn't be buying that again, book her.
So there's $900 roughly that was a one-time for a period of time.
And shipping on that too was included on the 325. So we don't usually spend that kind of money.
That was it for me. I was just saying this line, that was it for me. Thank you.
Yeah.
With Jimmy. Also, I'm all set. Well, thank you. And we did, Sue and I, Theresa, we did discuss all their invoices are going to be coming through the town as of July.
I did, yeah, I haven't actually gotten. They are possible. They're going to meet on Monday. Most likely.
What would you think you'd be able to come back with, with information on the survey and the basement?
Would we call for Sue here? We know you have a recommendation. You know, John Bridges originally did it.
Yeah, John Bridges, if he's interested in the building. Yeah, I already contacted him. Okay. House not available. Send me, Sue, who do you, I can send you who we've been, you'll send. Okay. Both of you, all of you? Number one, Sue. Those two, one will go to all of us.
You can just send it to me and I can send it to after. But when you send, when I say send it to me, send it to the library? Because I just realized that Stephon sent a thing to me, but he sent it to my personal email. And then I have battery when I was like, so if he was wondering why I haven't answered.
He was, I did.
Has it been, it's going to the library email.
Okay. And I'll email your.
I'm sure I'm into you.
And I have not, that's for finding someone who does the French drains. If the town was aware of someone, he might, that's what I do. He might cause that. James Tostas has come helping with that.
What's that? What can I do?
Trying to find someone who might modify our French drains. So he had, I was over.
Correct.
I don't know.
Yeah, so when I come to visit, we'll look at it and then I'll, and I'll suggest who we could get to figure out what kind of covers would be needed and all that.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Because we got to make sure we put something that's going to be durable enough, but won't. You know, we don't want to put steel and rust and all that. We got to make sure we use a good material to cover them. But you got a good point in the, you know, evaporation, it happens. You have water that's sitting there, you know.
Right.
And we can, if we do that and we look at the humidifier, I think we can solve a lot of this. We'll see.
I'm hoping that's how I answer it. Thank you very much, you've got it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Mount Caesar Libraries of Steeze. This was Mount Caesar.
Yeah, I know. You can see this doesn't matter. None of that. Just tell me if it wants.
So I asked Michael. Do we have last? This is.
This just has August, January to August 24th.
Did we, did we get read last year?
I did, I also just wanted a chance to look at them all, take a ride, so I don't have. Just a shift.
What I'd asked Michael for yesterday was to ask you to bring in last year's. So we had, we had history to go by.
Oh, from 2023. Oh, I didn't get that.
Yeah, what '23 actual was, what '24 budgeted was. And then where you are, what you've given us is year to date.
Yeah, oh, okay. I didn't get that message, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was my fault.
Ceiling bank.
I put it all on you, Michael.
Well, you called me about four times yesterday, so I guess I mistranslated.
Sweetie, oh, how about this? This was our treasurer's report from the last trustee meeting. Does that 2023 handle? Would that work?
True.
Yeah, you've got it in the right hands.
I think I have another one. She can bring it.
So tell us what you want to spend your money on.
Well, first of all, we want to thank you for all the support you guys have given us. We've asked for a lot of money over the last, so we're just paid off with our library, youth service librarian. She is really, I mean, she's going great. She's got 17 and counting programs going and with the, with the construction that we did. We now have that room available, we've got more stuff going on. We got a movie night going on Saturday night. So we're doing really well. Paper is up, I mean, it's all good. So I think the overall increase is 2.9% this year. Not too bad compared to some of these years.
What was your increase the year before?
It was a lot more. We had, we had, I don't remember what it was, but we had asked for a salary increase for, for our youth service librarian to have her work. She requested it work a whole another day.
That was last year you asked for that?
Yes, for 2024.
And this year's increase will be mainly for?
It's over 2 points, it's 2.9 overall. A big increase in programming because we were closed from January to March with that construction. We would have ran out of money by the end of this year for programming if we were open for those three months. I mean, we've, we have enough now to the end of this year. We also are asking for an increase for custodial. Our cleaning person is not doing the job and we pay him $200 a month. We need $400 a month to hire a cleaning company. I don't know what you guys do at the town hall, but.
We're between, between cleaning.
Oh, really? Maybe we should convince on that.
Yeah, we just hired someone new to do this building. I think they've been doing this for about a month.
It's hard to find, it's hard to find.
They're like $20 and then they're, you know, you get what you pay for. Or it's like thousands of dollars and it's unaffordable.
I've had people not show up when they're supposed to meet with us, not return emails. I mean, it's been.
I think we're on our third one or so.
Wow.
So we're just. So yes, let's coordinate.
Maybe you should talk before we, anyway.
Even 400, even 400 a month, depending on how much you want it.
That was the quote we got from the guy that we're thinking of hiring anyway. The HVACs, we have to ask for a little more money in building because our HVAC maintenance is $3,000 a year. But hopefully we're saving money while we won't be buying any more oil because we put, we put in a low HVAC system in the library. Yeah. Let's see what else. You know, downloadable books are increasing all the time, that is going up. And as well as paper, our cover books are going up over 30 bucks a piece. So that's, you know, those materials are just getting more expensive. And these are things that we, that are popular, yeah. Yeah, downloadable's in, of course, the books. As far as payroll goals, we're asking for to pay Caddy now $30.62, which is going up from 27.83. So that's like a $2.79 increase an hour. And that kind of gets her where she should be as far as equitable with other towns, our size. What they pay their library directors. So it's a little bit, what we pay her now is a little bit less than. But the $30.62 will give her up to where a more, a better wage for her. And staff is going to increase from 17.85 to $19 an hour. So that is a $1.15 increase an hour. So I think those are the big points of increase.
Can we go back to the cleaning?
Yes, yes, we can.
Cleaning thing? Tell me a little about that. What is, what are they specializing in cleaning and that, the employees that we have?
We had one guy come and clean our, our building and he's just not, he doesn't vacuum. A lot of the times he doesn't take the trash out. We pay him $200 a month. And, you know, it's just the same, a regular one guy doing it. And I think we need more professional cleaning because the library's got to be clean. You know, they don't, he doesn't dust.
How often is this kid, how often does this guy come?
Once, once a week.
One?
One day a week.
One day a week.
Yeah, and that's, has always been adequate, I think. But, but I think, I think that's all we need is once a week. Yeah, and that's, has always been adequate, I think, but, but, um, I think, I think that's all we need is once a week, but.
In the hours that we have open, we have one person there at all times, is that how it works?
Yes, usually two.
Usually you have two people?
Yeah, the library director works 30 hours a week, I think, and Andrea and.
Is that the library director that's?
Caddy.
Want to go to the 30.62?
Yes.
So she's, she's in charge of?
Yes.
Of the whole library?
Yeah. And Caddy.
And the people under where it's 17 and you want them to go to 19?
Yes, so Donna works 24 hours a week and, um, Andrea, I think is up to 30 hours a week now. She's a youth service librarian.
How many does Kay work, you said it was? Linda's making the 30.
Caddy, yeah, Caddy, Caddy, C A D R E, Caddy.
How many hours does she work?
30.
Let's see. Have they got the same hours as this library?
No, we, we're open more.
You're open more?
We're open 30 hours a week.
30 hours a week. What days are you closed, weekends?
We're closed on Fridays and Sundays, we're open every other day.
Fridays and Sundays.
You know, I think many years ago they were open on Fridays, but they did this austerity measure, it was before my time. Because there was, I don't know what was going on, but they decided to close libraries on Friday. We've just never. Entertained that thought one year and everybody went ballistic, so I said, forget about it. We're on right now, 2:00.
So, so Mary, in, in these two columns, one is your actual through the end of August? And then the other one is, is that what you projected through that timeframe or is that through?
Which one are you looking at now, the profit and loss?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is, is the year to date budget through, through August or is it?
This one is, oh.
Eight months?
No, this is just, when he, this is what their treasurer gave me today. And what we spent so far.
From January to end of August?
From January to the end of August.
So eight months.
Yeah, this is eight months.
So we got four months left and this is their balance, their budget, right?
He said that we're waiting on a $4,000 or two bill from the insurance company for, on the building and content.
This is just.
And, um, he also said that most of our book purchases came place at the end of the year, so we, he said that line, this is exactly what he said, so that line item is a little low right now.
So what, what is year to date budget, what does that indicate?
It should be 144,000, Mike said, we give them about 12,000 a month. So I think what they just did was carry it over for the eight months, it's 96. So that should be 144.
Yeah, I think that's.
For, for, for the annual, but, but.
For the year to date budget.
Look, not for year to date.
Months is 96.
Right.
Not, not for year to date, year to date would be 10, 10 months. So it'll be 120.
Well.
But that all.
All right, yeah, so year to date, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure.
So by saying it that way, but the annual budget is 144.
Yeah.
So.
So. What I'm trying to figure out, learn is what, what column, what, what, what does this column indicate? Is it the annual budget? Is it, is it what you, what you would have, what you budgeted through the end of August?
Right.
I asked him for what, what, what did you ask for?
2024 actual, actual expenses.
Right, and this is what he sent me. I'm sorry, I'm not very.
Well, you, you explain. You would, you did explain the insurance because there was about a $4,000 difference.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if this column is the annual budget.
Yes.
If it's, if it's the year to date budget, in other words, through the end of August, then you're just comparing your actual against what you projected, then it's, it's something different.
This just goes to the, that's not the full budget, is it? But no, I don't think it is, it's just till, off the, the end of August.
Exactly what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Hope that's what you wanted.
Well, I think in terms of trying to, uh, help with you, help you analyze your budget, this isn't helpful.
Okay.
But like, for, for example, you've got, you know, repairs or, or 30,000 against a budget of 167. Dollars. And I didn't see anything. Here that is even close, you've got building maintenance and repairs of 16,000. But what, what was that 30? Was it part of your capital improvement or was this an unusual expense?
Which one are you looking at?
See, 30,000.
Nice, probably covered from last year.
It was under repairs, right? So it's like something big happened, did we do, that's what he's trying to get at, see right here, look.
Yeah. Was the painting run a different line? Because we painted for 26,000. Oh, yeah. Could that be it? We painted the building and it was 26 and almost 30,000. I'm sorry.
All right.
I'm not bearing, that's why we have a treasurer, you should be here.
I think that's what we need, is the treasurer here.
And then the miscellaneous other income, 6320. That's from your, like, youth programs, youth summer.
Miscellaneous other income. I don't know.
6,300.
I think, I think the health, what, what we're trying to avoid is the scenario you presented. That if you had been open those months at the beginning of the year, you'd be closed down because you couldn't operate.
Well.
So we're, we're just trying to make sure that.
Yeah.
Well, this accounts for your increase in payroll. I also, I might be missing it, it might be wrapped in here, but, um, your utilities. You show it on, on this column, but I don't, I don't see it in the projected expenses for 25.
On this one? I think under building and maintenance, that might be, and you're talking about the budget, actual budget request.
Yep.
I think he included that. Under the building and maintenance at 16,364.
So, uh, I think, I think we just would, would appreciate having something more specific so you don't end up with what you're, with, with what could have happened this year.
Well, I know that with, if we increase our, I think he increased, wanted to increase the programming by $1,000, that would definitely, um. Make, to make it, you know, we would not be running out of money for that. He just being a whole hundred minutes didn't get for 6,000 dollars. So wait, do we need to have Richard sign that? Something?
Well, Michael could show you the, the format that we typically see from, from departments.
Okay.
Could be modified.
Basically, it sounds like the big thing we're still missing, but I did ask, what was the 2023 actuals and budget, right?
Yes, and it was budgeted for.
We could probably.
And how was you on against the budget?
2023.
We know what our, our appropriation to them for.
We don't know how it broke out.
So.
We know how they said it was going to break out this time last year.
It's here?
Oh, well, I don't know if it's here, no.
That's, that was, that was really my, my question with regard to this column. And, and Sly answered that it's, it's not year, it, it, year to date as of the end of August, but it doesn't give us the full year of what was asked.
So you need 2023 to compare.
Well, we would need 23, what was budgeted for 23, what was actual? What was budgeted for 24 and what's actual? I think we have the actual through August. Which might be the best that, that he can do, but what we don't have is what was budgeted for 24. And I think a more expanded. Spreadsheet for what, what the request is, just so you can be sure that, that maintenance is in there, utilities is in there. Again, just because the, the costs were so significantly higher than what's being budgeted.
Okay.
And then your insurance, um, you're, you're indicating that there's a $4,000 bill coming, which basically put the insurance at 6,000. And what's budgeted is 4,800, so is it a different, are there, are there less requirements with insurance?
That I don't know, I can't do that, I wish, unless I said, Richard should be here. Still being in show.
The good news is we're doing it now and not in December.
Yeah, no kidding. So. What should we do? Have, have, send those things to you?
That'd be great.
Yep.
Might Richard do that.
I'm going to send him a spreadsheet.
He's in the middle of moving, definitely part of the problem.
I know that feeling.
Yeah. Are you moving into your lounge, recent?
We, no, we did.
Oh, you already did?
And I'd be interested in knowing what the income is from the programs.
Oh, none, no, we don't.
Beyond the bell and all that, nothing, there's, are any?
Our programming is all free.
Is there any grants from the state or anything that pay for any of that?
I don't think we, I don't believe if applies for any grants.
I think some of their income shown on that.
I mean, I think. For our programming. We don't, we don't charge anything for programming, it's all free.
It's a great opportunity.
What?
Might be a missed opportunity.
Yeah, I don't know, I think people would stop coming if we started charging and maybe it's like moms with kids coming in for story time and music and things like that.
What's the 14,000 over here, other, what's the other income there?
We decide I don't have that, so it's a good question to ask.
Yeah, I was just looking on the income here, right? We got 96, I assume that's from the town.
Yeah.
Then you had donations of 100. Then you had dividends, right? And then you had your books and copies, but what is this 14,200, did we get something? That's a pretty large number.
Other grants.
Fundraising, you did 1,900.
It says other grants.
Says other grant.
Campbell campaign offset.
Yeah, it's a lot of money that you took in and, and you made the total 116.
That could be, we probably spent some of that on our project.
Well, it's showing his income that you guys got that and received that money, so.
Yeah, no, I know.
I was just curious, take a look, right? See, where's his income, look down at the, all there.
Well, the good news is participation is up.
It's fantastic.
It's great.
Well, yeah, so it sounds like you want to give us more money than we're asking for.
Well, we, I think that's a concern when.
Yeah.
You feel that you, you would have had a shortfall and wouldn't be able to be open for the full year. And I think that's a reasonable.
Well, that's why we're asking for the $1,000 increase in programming because it would have been, I think we would have been okay if we had more money. I mean.
Every indication from Richard is we have plenty to do.
Yeah, we do, I mean, we, we've had meetings, he has been very comfortable in the fact that we have enough money to. And buy books, which is normally when she's purchasing all the, a lot of the materials, but, um.
But she did say, don't ever tell that to the sliding board when you're talking budget.
What do you mean?
That you have plenty of money.
I just mean that we don't have to close down for that.
Very, very close.
We're closer two months out of this year.
Well, because we were doing construction, we were actually closed from the end of August last year until we, we opened in April for the, we did a major construction project.
And how do the employees get paid during this closeout?
They did, working, yeah.
They did get paid.
But they were working, I mean, they were not working maybe the 30 hours, 24 hours. But Andrea worked out of Stratton with, um, her programs, with all her programming. They worked from home, Donna was at the town hall. Helping patrons, doing books, exchanges. So they did a lot of work from home.
What kind of construction was done?
So we reinforced the second, was the first and second floor. And, um, because we were told by a structural engineer that all our floors are unsafe. Um, and we put in a whole new HVAC system, uh, being cooling system. For more oil.
And painted the building too, right?
We painted, well, that was separate, yeah.
And the front, uh, access.
That was done, yeah, that was done before, um, we put in a ram, the new stairs. Because we got a lot of complaints about access to the.
Yeah.
Library, trying to navigate those stairs, the old granite steps.
Mike will get you a spreadsheet, if you could have your treasurer fill in the appropriate lines.
So you're going to send me something?
Yes.
Okay, Richard's going to be happy with it.
He'll understand because at, at least from this perspective, it would be beneficial if it were broken out like this was. He'll, he'll, he'll appreciate that.
Do you have Richard's email?
Yes, I'll email.
Why don't you email Richard? Because that, instead of me being the middleman, I'd have to just send it to him anyway. Sorry, if you do that, that would be great, I'm sorry. I feel so dumb.
I can you want it, so you know what you're going to be in for.
Other than that.
That you sound very intelligent.
Yeah, wow. Well, thank you very much again, I mean, honestly.
Did a great job.
We are thrilled with our library. And I hope you are too.
That's tremendous. A lot accomplished, you all.
Did you see that, have you seen the work done? You should come in.
I've been in, I'll be over. I heard, I heard the floors weren't very safe.
They are now, they're beautiful, you know what? They pulled up the carpet that was probably in there for 50 years, it was disgusting. They were beautiful, it was beautiful hardwood, gold growth wood. So we took it all out. I tell you, that guy that did it, he was a craftsman, he took it, milled it all, sanded it, beautiful, fitted all that together.
Nice.
It's beautiful, the floor is absolutely stunning in there. A whole new look.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Andrew.
Very solid waste manager, Josh Whipple.
Who do we have here tonight?
How's it going?
Good to see you. You ready to come in the lion den?
Oh, yeah.
This is for you.
Have you got Josh?
Oh, I mean, Josh knows, Josh is a regular. Comes and sits at the bar and.
Have a soda?
No, we haven't. Put a couple of sodas. And which money do you need, Josh?
Um, overall, I think our increases were. It's been the contracts. Think this is fire.
Yeah, you're on the bottom of page three and bottom of page four.
Yeah. It would have been nice having separated.
Everyone's a critic.
Bottom of page three. So look the first page, Josh, and then you're right here, see?
I got the mini version, might be a little easier.
Now, this is still fire at the bottom of page three.
What way at the bottom, last three lines, why are you projecting your decrease?
Uh, so for the salary wise, I was talking to Michael and we figured that we don't really need the seasonal full time summer anymore. Since we got the full timer last year. Um, so that was 15,000 decrease, I believe. And then we shifted 5,000 that over to the part time salaries just for, just to wash, yeah, pretty much. Then the other increase was, uh, telephone and internet, the majority of that is for the wired firearm. Through a consolidated, that was 1,500 a year, which kind of didn't see that last year coming into it, so. Nice to be able to bank for it this year. Solid waste, that's the usual 3% increase and then going into next July will be the start of a new contract. So this winter, we're going to be working with waste management to get rates, see what their plan is and any other new programs they might have.
So what, when will that, will that be going forward this summer or is it?
I'm going to be working with them this winter to get a new contract, so I've kind of put in what I estimated, looking around for pricing. And that's a comfortable number too, because we've been working on trying to take stuff out, so whatever number is there, we're hopefully going to decrease tonnage anyways.
And the new contract goes into July or August?
August 1st, we can start. Um, then same thing with construction and demolition disposal, that's a 3% increase for two. Um, then same thing with construction demolition disposal. That's a three percent increase for two thousand dollars. And then department supplies, that bumped up twelve hundred fifty. And I just got your email before I came here. Um, and so to answer that, the.
I just had to point out a couple of areas where I thought he might be, to our prior discussion, might be cutting himself a little tight where he spent over budget and or close. People speak to those.
Um, so the recruitment and retention, the major increase for, was this year, was the sixteen hundred we spent out of it and that was for the.
Advertised ones.
Same month and a half. And I'd rather put a poster up than pay twelve hundred dollars for a month of ads.
Well, we eventually got a one that's worth it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I think that's, couldn't hurt to bump that one up to five hundred, I guess. I don't plan on really advertising for a month for anything. Um, protective equipment was the other question Mike had. I did bump that up to one hundred.
What does that consist of, Josh? Tech equipment?
Uh, so that covers all our gloves, um, ear protection, eye protection, um, high vis clothing, stuff like that. Um, and that kind of varies depending on new staff, how many we have coming in, because a lot of people will year after year use the same jacket for the winter time. And I'll try and kind of offset it and switch it out for people. And it does include safety toe shoes. And that's another thing where it depends if somebody's, we get three new people one year and they're gonna need the hundred and thirty dollar boots, so.
Do you think that's adequate? You, you, you basically spent through the end of August, but you were originally budgeting.
Yeah, and that's because.
And that kind of catch the edge down from the twenty-three.
Yeah, I was trying to catch up on some stuff this year and bolt buy with the excess in the budget this year. That's why it's kind of inflated right now. I guess twenty-two hundred won't be bad, just a little buffer, but I'll launch. Department supplies, I'm happy with that twelve fifty increase because I'm a bolt buy stuff at the beginning of the year and I did order a bunch of stuff this year, so we kind of got a head start on it. Uh, so I'm, I'm comfortable with the fifty-two fifty for department supplies.
What was in twenty-three?
Uh, that was all the construction stuff. Um, just have an extra in the budget, so I ended up buying it out of there instead of the capital reserve.
Yep.
I guess it was twelve thousand in twenty-twenty-three and I was buying all that material handling bins, um, stuff for the windows, paint. Uh, and that was a big increase this year as all the painting supplies and just odds and ends and stuff like that. So that's kind of the catch-all.
So even though that you, you're over that through the end of August, you, you still feel that next year is gonna be different? How much more are you gonna spend, do you think?
This year?
Yeah.
Um, maybe a little bit more. We still have a few more things I want to get, but then it'll be right back to a regular year next year. And after that, we can kind of gauge whether we should drop it the following year and on, so. Um, but that was one of those line items where it's just a catch-all. It, it's been over consistently, but not by much, except for twenty-twenty-three. Um, because I believe originally we had the three thousand in there consistently. So then, um, I think as prices go up too, that's going to affect it as well. But I think that's a comfortable number for me.
And uniforms?
Uh, that's a separate one.
You're basically level funding and you're gonna spend that.
Some of the, um, winter jackets fell under that this year, so. Um, Joe and I worked with Centos on contract negotiations, so we were able to get, I think, ten dollar decrease per week, but then their annual increase when in fact, so we save six bucks a week overall, even with the increase, so. I think that'll be a steady item and we won't have to worry about that one either.
Do we need new jackets for the guys out at the dumpsters?
They, they go up? Yeah, yeah. Again, we sweat trunks this year, so they should be all set.
Do they go to the washing plant with Centos, like the other stuff or do they, you buy them all right and they own them?
Yeah, I just buy them all right.
Oh, from Centos?
No, I did that, um, online and I get a cheaper price on.
What do you do from Centos?
Uh, basically this, Nick and I.
And they shake them up every week, clean them and bring them home?
Yep. Yeah, so one room, we use our washing machine.
So it's just your shirts?
Shirts, pants, yeah. Yeah, and we each have seven pairs, so gives us enough for weekly.
Yeah. Shirt too is making sure you put them in the hamper and.
Yeah, exactly.
That's my problem.
Oh, I forget them all the time.
I bet.
So it's fairly straightforward, but.
Yeah.
Just a few contract increases. I think we'll be in much better shape next year and year after. I hope to be even better, so.
Like this is one of our departments that runs fairly bad. It's Josh, doesn't really tell.
What a many.
Does each of Joe thought.
There are also the burning pits.
I saw over here in Stanny. Yeah. So I figure so once I get some snow started, we'll all start burning it slowly and just work through it there, so.
Do you have to truck that out, Shaw?
No, I just use as banking for the pits. So if they ever change something and they want to come down, it's all in the same area, so not mixed with anything, so. I'll make it easier for them. Um, and if they come down, it's all brushed anyways. We're not burning pressure treated or anything like that, so. Should theoretically probably be clean material, so. Um, and actually today we were working on trying to get the glass bunkers set up for shipment, so then we can start ordering blocks and then.
Yeah, I did a little there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Did you get your new lift too?
Yep.
How's that working?
Slick.
Slick?
Yep. unloaded a truck the other day with it on the parking lot. Visible, you don't have to worry about somebody standing around and bobcats, so.
So the old ones that get on it, man, you put it up front and decorated, put some resin lights on it?
The things now, nuts and bolts, took it all apart, so.
It had to go.
Yeah, and I kind of threw a wrench in my old last bunker plan because the truck that they're sending is thirteen to fifteen feet high. We only have a ten foot reach for the bobcat, so I don't want to have the lower doing, put contamination there just because it's such a not exact like the bobcat could be, so we're working on building a.
Ramp?
Ramp, so it's gonna be two block high.
Lift you up out of.
Seven feet out of it and then we're gonna put guardrails, so God forbid somebody tries to walk up and or drive up to the cane, so.
I've had people that would do that.
No, somebody drove over there today. So now that'll kind of block that area off.
So two blocks will get you the right height?
Yep, yep, because we have a eleven foot reach for the bobcat and it'll go two feet down, so that'll be plenty of room for us. Right along that slip lane, so the truck just pulls up and it's basically back and forth, just loaded, so should work out pretty good.
So you must have been like, oh my God, look at all those truckers. Like that wasn't.
I was ready for that one, so.
You get it.
So hopefully, uh, shooting by the end of the month, have that ready to roll and then ship it out maybe mid-November and just trying to line up all the end of the year stuff, get everything out and ready for a fresh start next year, so.
Free going with your classes? Good. We're playing classes.
Yep, Nick's on the schedule for the December fourth exam and I'm at seventy-five hours of training so far.
What you need, a hundred?
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
So poking at it, but, um.
But I think you told us it's gonna take you a year, right, or something?
No, I've, I'm thinking February and March, if I'm going at the rate I'm going. So that'll get me back to weekend testing and.
You're at seventy-five right now? You're at seventy-five right now?
Yeah, yeah. So some of them are hourly, so it doesn't really add up too much. That's a, that's a breaker, but the Hennecker trade show, I don't think that'll count towards my hours, but it'll count towards my research, so. I get twenty, twenty-five TCHs right now, so it's enough to recertify already, but I gotta get the two twenty-five first, so. It's a game plan.
You will.
Banging away at it. It's interesting stuff too, so like kind of almost keeps you engaged.
Should be a bummer if you weren't.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Oh, no, not at all.
Cool that you are.
Yep, great, not bad, so.
Very good. So for the minute taker, we increased recruitment and retention two fifty and protective equipment two hundred. So you said.
Yeah, so twenty-two hundred total.
To twenty-two hundred.
Yep. Yeah, I think that would be a comfortable number and. Work at it and try and shrink it down even more. More we can get out of the contact, that's gonna be the key, so. I've been doing a lot of research on food waste and stuff like that and companies that are available, so that may be beginning of next year, we'll start trying to crack down on that. The goal is to have people do it at their house, so it doesn't even have to come to us, so that eliminates it from even handling first.
Is there a program, you, you could research to put in place to encourage people, maybe with a reduced reduce cost for whatever they need for a system?
Yeah.
And, and educate people?
I was actually thinking that's gonna be the majority of my Swansea uncovered, so make it a little easier. And there's actually quite a few companies. I think there's over a dozen in the state, but all depends on where you are from what you handle, what you're looking to get rid of. Um, there's Elm City, I forget the name, Elm City Recyclers or something, but they do food waste pickup, um, education, training, stuff like that, so that'll be something to look into for the new year. That'll be the big one.
Yeah.
That'd be a lot. I think it's, I think estimate it's like thirty to forty percent of the waste streams, food. And you obviously can't help solve it one or helpless pizza or something like that, but the smaller items, and I'll still take out quite a bit of weight, so. It's a goal.
Weight and volume.
Yep, exactly.
Um, we have both, I don't remember exactly the amount, but we have some money left over on the major project that Mike had suggested, well, let's give it a year or so and see if stuff comes up. We're at about a year. Um, or if there's anything you'd like to try to do with that or if the board's preferences to let that lapse and just go back into the CIP process.
Which we told them.
I want to say it was like fifty thousand.
I think really the only thing.
For the program?
Pretty well furnished, yeah.
They got the best break of the town, I think.
I think really the only thing is back to me. This is gonna be our biggest thing because even waste oil is just such a dirty product that this, I test fired it Sunday because we haven't really needed to use it. Test fired it Sunday, ran it for two, three hours, worked fine, came in Tuesday, turned it on, worked fine. Then this morning had to reset it again. Same issue as last year, overrun all day overnight, it'll shut off and then it's thirty-five degrees in there in the morning. And then today, actually, I was in the office, turned it on, reset it, fired, it was running fine and Nick called me on the radio and said that it was oil leaking, so I go over there and flew through the pressure gauge on the mower. So I don't know if backflow or one of the valves didn't work, so diverted it right through the PSI gauge, so they're scheduled to come.
They actually come up inside the gauge and popped out, broke out, oil up was coming out of it?
It didn't break it, but it was worn at the bottom.
It was put.
So they're coming sometime to fix that either this week or next week, so I think.
True, I mean.
Not right now.
So you're thinking that we could use a backup oil supply, so we could actually put oil in the tank?
Uh, we do have.
A furnace. Or a backup furnace, another boiler, just.
Yeah, because we do have.
Let me ask you a question. When you put the waste oil in the tank and you burn it, right? And if you added regular oil to that delivered, does that help? Can you do that?
Depends which one I put it in.
Okay.
Because the one that's, we're having issues with, that likes that thicker consistency, so if I put heating oil in there, it'll go past all the seals and something will be jumping out at the end of the winter. Um, but our new one, that one likes a thinner blend, so I've been doing half heating oil, half waste oil and then putting some treatment in it, so it kind of melds it all together. Um, because I was talking with Jasmine about either propane or can't really do electric heat in that big building, that's a problem.
Yeah, propane is the way to go.
Yeah.
Put the myofemna on the unit like a blow up.
Because we do have a old home heating over furnace, but that one's had thousands of dollars put into it. We haven't used it in years just because it's so old and doesn't work. And we actually just ripped the tank out for that and cut all the lines, so it's completely out of service now, so.
Tell me what part of the buildings you heat. Do you heat where all you guys mainly work? But if I pull in, that right side building with all the windows, that, that he gets heated?
Yep.
And then you break on the other side, the new break room and the bathrooms.
Yeah, that's all reading.
Now, if that doesn't run over there, could we cause the bathrooms to freeze out, the toilet bowls overnight in the winter? Is that dangerous?
No, that side's pretty well insulated. Um, it, even last winter, it went off one time and I think it was twenty degrees outside and it's still forty, fifty in there, so.
So is there two systems, one for one side, one for the other side? And they bolt a waste oil?
Yep.
And you're saying one of them runs, likes to run with a little thinner?
Yep.
One doesn't?
Yeah.
Which one likes to run with the little thinner, with the break room, the new one?
Yep, and that's all reading, so it heats the floor and.
Got it.
So that's, that side works actually really well. Um, and, uh, energy logic, that's our main open one.
Yep.
That one we've had for four years now, so it's still new. We've only got twenty-one hundred hours on it. Um, and there's just something wrong, uh, something simple, but they have to figure it out yet.
Got it.
So I'm hoping this time when they come back, um, they're gonna bring chenozals, filter. Uh, but I have a feeling it's that backflow valve that they replaced last year because we were having the same issue, so I don't know. Somewhere along the line there, but, um, but when it runs, it runs great. That's the thing, saves a lot of money on heating lines, so.
So is, is the idea of a back of heating system, would that be something you would be interested in with this money that Michael's talking about?
Yeah.
And how would you go about something like that? Would you put another unit next to that or something? Or how would that happen?
Maybe.
Just a straight regular oil, like a propane? Lower propane system, like modings or something or?
Yeah, because I've actually gone through and kind of winterized the building even more and I'm gonna put more on the windows, so we're gonna have the flaps on this side and then flaps on the inside too, so it's a double protection, just because one went through there, but um, even nighttime when everything's closed up and the heat shuts off, it'll still stay forty in there, thirty to forty, but not working and sucks.
Oh, no, I know.
But then the balers, all the hydraulics cold, so they don't like to run rear cold.
All the oils and everything gets tired.
And if you can restart it quick enough, it will run fine, but once it drops down low, I think forty-five degrees, the burner doesn't like to cold start like that, so that's the issue.
What's the longest period of time that that building's down for, where nobody there? Does it go eight hours, ten hours, twelve hours, two days? Sunday, Monday?
Yeah.
So if that went down at the beginning of Sunday, when you walked away?
You're done.
You're done.
They have to come and, come and.
Yeah.
Clean it or restart it.
Yeah, it's, it's bad.
Um, because I mean, I'll do certain things where they'll bleed it, but then even that doesn't help it sometimes, so there's some issue in there from start to finish where it's not connecting itself, so.
I think the money would be, if she's talking about using money, I think you should look into it.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's important.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think that's where money would be spent.
Yeah.
And I think you'd come up with a plan of maybe a propane system, bunch of money for a few.
Just to take.
They're simple.
Yeah.
You just set and they turn on, blow good heat down.
Because before, I think that's what killed our whole burner was because the building was such a cheese breed.
Yeah.
Where we had holes everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, I went through and gap sealed all the door, door frames and.
That building next year, is it just a metal building? Is it all metal, right?
Yeah, it's got insulation.
But they did spray it? It is sprayed in there?
Uh.
You got it all sprayed in there?
The new side, yeah, and the old side.
The old side?
That's just, um, brick insulation, wall pack.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's insulated and it had a new roof in twenty sixteen or seventeen.
So your main heat escapes from the open doors of the flaps?
That's basic.
Going in and out with the flaps and.
It could be the waste oil burn or a little working during the day, so. It, it works, that's the thing.
Yeah.
All summer, so I filled the tank in gelapay and then emptied probably twenty gallons out, filtered that to see if there was any water or sediment at the bottom. Everything looked good and got a little bit of sediment, but for the most part it's been sitting there, so I had enough time for everything to settle.
Yeah, sludge and stuff.
Anything, yeah, so. Um, and we do triple filter it when we, when we get it and then when we pump it in, we'll let it sit, so it settles and then we've got, um, we've got a screen that goes into a screen into a screen, and so it's filtering it the whole way through, so. And then it gets filters before it hits the pump, but then the pump starts to burn.
Do you just typically use motor oil? What is it?
Uh, motor oil, hydraulic, no.
No, not freidel oil.
No, some people do that, but I feel like that would come get up even more, so. Um, but motor oil, hydraulic. No, some people do that, but I feel like that would get up even more. So um, but motor oil, hydraulic, um, transmission fluid, gear oil. Gear oil is a dick where you don't want to put a bunch of that in there.
You have to dilute that. Well, I think you should go out and look at some numbers and come back to us with a heating system. Not you?
Wanted to do that in July, but the year got away from me.
I guess.
October.
They meant those radiant honeycomb. Uh, propane heaters, they heat objects. So heat people, they'll heat your baler.
Hmm.
But they don't heat the air. So you can keep your door open.
Oh.
Everybody inside is still warm.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was trying to brainstorm.
The radiant honeycomb propane heaters, like Hannaford has one in the back room.
I don't understand that.
You have the door open, people coming and going, but the heater is right there and it heats the people and the uh, machines and objects. It doesn't heat the air.
It's science. That's way beyond me. I never even heard of such a thing. That's cool.
Little dealers have it there.
Yeah.
In their service always.
I was thinking about getting some of the hanging heat ramps. It's the same thing.
Oh, my dear.
Yeah.
A fire kind of rolls out.
Yep, yeah. I was thinking about getting um, some of those for the sorting windows to kind of kill the cold air as it comes down. So that might help too.
What do they call it? What's the name of it?
Radiant heat.
Yeah, instead of in the floor, it's up on the ceiling.
So I need a heating system for my my garage.
That's what you want.
I I gotta look into that because I was gonna put in what we were just talking about, one of the propane things that blow. So wow, I'm gonna have to look into that. Where would you go for those? Gas, any gas company? The regular gas companies? L and G would tell them?
Imagine.
Probably go.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, so I'll do some research on that.
Do it, Josh.
Try and get that.
I think you'll be happy there. Yeah, I think you'll be happy in the winter dealing with that gelling up and all that. That's painful. It's painful to walk in with thirty five and then everybody's trying to get going work. They're all standing around.
It's it's not that bad this time of year because it's still pretty insulated and sealed tight overnight. But then once the windows.
December, January, wind whipping. I just want, I couldn't do.
April.
I got you.
You got all those stumps out back if you want to put in a biovast first.
I thought about that too. Those are cool. Get one of those big four boilers.
I'll pick something else though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Next up, Fire Chief Eric Mattson.
That's the big one, right? That's the big one, isn't it? That's the, that's where we run the shit.
This, oh, I have one or two.
I have two and why do I have two?
It's for him.
Oh.
Don't give him the one.
I was like, oh, you guys are cheaters. How is that?
Let's go back to the front page here.
I tried to get him the small ones. They don't like that.
Looks like Bill's ready to lay into you over here next to me. He's got you.
One's for you.
Leave it for you.
I'm learning, Bill. You go right ahead, buddy. I'll follow when you lead.
So the first item at the top, which is kind of quasi fire department, is the ambulance service contract. Um, so we're in kind of year, two and a half of our three year contract and we're gonna be in year two and a half. So um, there they have annual. Uh, payments based on July one to June thirty. So our first year was from one of, one of, yeah, twenty, what was that, twenty two or twenty three? Twenty three, I guess. Um, July one to June thirty. So we have half the year is on one payment schedule and half the year is on another. Um, our payment amount, not schedule. So seventy five here counts for the increase for next year.
And what was this gonna go again? July?
Yeah, so it's July, July one to June thirty. So year one was July one to June thirty of twenty four. And this is twenty four to twenty five and then twenty five to twenty.
So we're.
No, we started in, it started in twenty two, didn't it? Am I looking at? I I tried to look at the contract.
I think it was only last year. You know, it seems like ten years ago.
No, it was started in twenty two, went into twenty three. We we had a partial, because last year we allocated fifty thousand. It didn't start in twenty twenty four.
That did start.
Twenty twenty three, I mean, it didn't start. Did it?
I think it was signed as, yeah, June of twenty three. Is that what you're writing?
Yeah. Oh, that's when it started. So we're in our second.
Second half.
Yeah.
Right.
And then what what are we gonna be the following year?
That was ninety? Who goes to last?
It's uh, yeah, it's like eighty two and some change. So, yeah, almost ninety.
Are we gonna want to allocate another, ask for another fifty thousand like we did last year?
It's a good idea. That number's just flawed. So it's not based on anything.
Right.
You know, but yeah, I think so. Real, real, real costs are coming one way or another. So.
Yeah.
And Chris, I spoke to Chris Coats a couple of months ago now, and then more recently, he expects to have some more updated numbers soon before the end of the year. But what we'll be looking at when the contract is over. That'll be awful. Yes, we'll be enlightened. So that's not, you know, it's not really fire department operational, but I just want to mention it except top.
So then you can get any part of that dart, seven million dollars or whatever.
So this year we're under right now on payroll, I see, right? Right, sixty two and.
Yeah, so the twenty four budget was based on a full time chief and a full time deputy. And we've been running with the full time chief and three or two, two part time deputies and a part time assistant chief. So that's basically the transition here is showing the new amount for the part time deputies and the part time wages. I don't know what we're planning to do with the other full time position, but I've just left that in there for now. So this is based on current. Current staffing with the full time position. The second full time.
I thought Sly's concept was that the 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 three would make up that second full time position. At least initially.
Right. I know. Yeah, I knew initially that was.
Yeah, because he came, Psy came across it. It was basically more of a saving. So what you're doing there with the three guys, if I remember right.
Well, it's just a saving on the retirement, you know. And the money's about the same.
Yeah.
A little more, actually.
But that's the large reason why we're under budget. Yeah, there's other factors too. But if you look at the twenty twenty four activity, that's why those numbers are so, so low, so lower than what was budgeted.
So the increase that we're looking at is about seven percent?
Twelve, thirteen.
Oh, it's twelve point five?
Yeah, seventy five thousand.
And the major reason for the increase would be what?
If you keep the two part time deputies and keep the full other full time position you're speaking right.
If we keep pay, so it's basically payroll we're talking about. I think, you know, if we kept the three part timers and the one full time E S I N, right?
Pretty much be a wash. There was just the one full timer. Chief, do you want to talk about some of the other adjustments you have factored in here?
Yeah.
Basically rearranging the deck chairs, hold it up, hold it down.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit. Um. You know, I'm so short, I've shortened up the the software and support. Just, I don't know what the difference of the lack of use is there, but. Software that one up there. Um.
So you you anticipate you're basically gonna do half of what you did through through the end of August? That that basically the numbers are staying consistent.
For that part, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so next year, you think it'll be flat?
I believe.
Could you, could you talk about the on call stipends? What's?
So I'll I'll jump in. I I'm not sure. And I need to check the finance about how things are being posted. So a couple of those lines have been used as different things. So. I think what this amount is, is if people are doing your on call stipend, the five dollars an hour that they get for that, I believe is getting posted there, but I'd want to verify that because at one point this same account holder, I think, was the weekend shifts.
Right.
So I'd like to verify that. But that's, I think that's when someone takes an on call shift from.
We started off the on call weekends. That's what we started off and. And then I believe that changed last year. So and through that, we've also changed to the night on call. But looking at it. If you, if you, if you stayed consistent with where you were through the end of August, it would be substantially below. So what what's going to change?
Well, basically, basically it wasn't happening until April May, when the new deputies came on to start taking.
Okay, so it is being utilized.
I believe.
Yeah. Or so.
Yeah.
Dan, Chief Burke and Chief Scancy when he was actually.
Yeah, we've got a few people that are, they're using it a lot.
Yep, Captain Fisher.
Yep.
So this is more, but it might be a matter where maybe we can decrease some of that, put more in the call wages if we make some of the other changes, like if we do a two hour minimum or something.
Okay, so in other words, the expenditure is playing. The expectation is that we will.
I don't know that we're gonna ever get to thirty thousand for on call stipends. I think that was like if every shift every night was covered, but. We're expecting to do more than the thirty six hundred we've done so far.
But it could be a way to uh. Maybe drive some employment volunteers and.
That's what we talked about, right?
Recruit some people and say, hey, you know. Be certified, we'll pay you five bucks an hour, the on call this night or so.
Yep, that makes sense.
So does that fall in with the 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 call training as well? Is that all part of it?
That's basically the catch all for any of the other. Either with someone, call, basically all the payroll that call members use, non, not people that are working a shift. Anyway, yeah, if they come in for Monday night training or if they come in and respond to a call, that pretty much all gets posted there.
So you're, so this is, this is exceeding what we'll have year to date, but you're anticipating that we'll get more participation by people on the training and. That would take advantage of this. This line item, is that my understanding?
That's the goal.
Yeah. So how do we measure that, Eric? How do we? How how do you, how do you measure the the participation to anticipate that? There's, there's increased involvement and.
I just, I I have no idea. Other than it's just being, I mean, offered to people and we, they already knew about the on call weekends. We don't get much participation out of that.
Okay.
So. You know, we're at, we're at a point of. Everybody's uh, time is more precious than what we're offering. So I would hope that they would, you know, that this was more involvement taking it, but.
Is it topic driven? Is is the training? Do you find that there's certain topics that people are?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people are coming out, you know, for the training, right? Yes. Yeah, they're they're coming out and and hitting the, the EMS training and the fire training. But yeah.
Okay. It just seems like a large increase if if they're not.
I don't think there's any magic behind the one twenty five. If you're comfortable keeping it at the one seventeen that it was in last year at all. I don't think there was any, there wasn't any analysis that we're trending like we're gonna be ten percent over. This is to catch all number that we kind of. Put together our best, so you know that.
I'd love to see you hit it. We're getting hurricanes. I don't think we want that, but it'd be, it'd be great if the participation and increased involvement.
Yeah.
Could could get you to that. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to question those couple of items at the top.
The other item that Sly had pointed out, which I think I mentioned during one of the uh, but budget performance reviews, but um, cell phones and. Mobile internet is a ninety nine thousand percent increase. That was due to a type of, type of graphic layer by me that that budget was supposed to be six thousand for twenty twenty four and it was six dollars. So. We're gonna be a little bit over on that.
So equipment maintenance and repair. We've, we've, we've had a good year.
Listen, you stop talking.
We'll let it go.
We count blessings.
They did just the other day and they. They put a thousand dollars in batteries into one of the engines.
You're not gonna do it till then. No, not going one. We've been, we've been doing all right. Um. I think some of our biggest stuff lately is uh, is we had to put, like you said, some batteries in one of the engines. Um. We just put an alternator into the uh, ladder. And uh. And those are kind of some of the bigger, bigger ticket stuff. Um. Had to deal with some, some uh, suspension issues with one of the other engines. But it hasn't been bad. Right now the ladder is down in Connecticut. Um. We had a. When we had our testing done, they pointed out that there's some hydraulic leaks in one of the, a couple of the cylinders. So. We're having those rebuilt and uh, in doing so, they also found that there's a small crack in one of the part of the waterways and a weld. So they're gonna repair that for us as well. So.
So what in there?
Hopefully, yeah. Hopefully that doesn't uh. Beat that part of the budget up too bad. What kind of medical supplies? Will you buy medical supplies? A little bit of everything, you know, you know, Band-Aids. Just for the, for the, for the fire stations? Pads, yep, yep. Just supply all the fire stations? Yep, we supply all, all the, all the medical vehicles with all the equipment. Well, like I explained to Michael, I've um, I haven't really spent too much in that part this year. And that's a lot of, kind of my fault. Um. Because it's been need driven rather than just by, via a supply. So it lasts us throughout the year kind of thing. Yeah, cuz you increase the budget. Play a little bit here and there. Yeah. And then you, you didn't spend a lot. So, yeah. Trying to work with a couple of the, of our part time people and get them involved with trying to get a better grasp on this. So we can have a proper supply rather than. Buy out of panic or anything like that. For a few here and there, so.
The the next line, Eric. The, with, with the, was there something that drove?
Yeah, this is our, that one there is our, uh, the biggest driver of that is our monitors came new. Our, we leased them and it was leased through, uh, I think it was the end of last year. I didn't realize it. Um. And we've just been paying on that budget and almost hopefully started to show up. It's over. But we need to get with them, we need to process getting with that right now to to figure that out, how to, you know. Not too much renew, either renewal lease or upgrade or. How often does this have to be done? Every year. Every year? No, no, we wouldn't. I I don't recall the the amount of time.
It's like a three.
I think this one we did three, so.
With a dollar buyout.
And that's what we need to invest to.
Right. So.
So, but you, but while you're doing that, you're not anticipating, truly, that it'll be another, well, this would average out to fifteen thousand? That it, it's gonna be, you, you got enough money allocated with the six thousand that you're asking for, or is that something you, you want to keep flexible until you have the?
I think right now it's gonna have to keep flexible until I get it, get it straightened out and get a proper price. For either, like, you know, until, you know, either a buyout or.
What, what, what type of monitors?
Cardiac monitors. So.
What's the lifespan of a, of a monitor?
The last ones we had, I think they were somewhere in a ten-year range. So every probably five years they do like upgrades to them. But these here are pretty, the ones we have now, um, are pretty, I would want to say indestructible, but they're, they're, they're pretty battle, battle-tested. So.
So what do you think in terms, in terms of timing, what do you guys think you need to verify and find out what, what our contract calls for? Is it a couple of weeks? Is it a couple of months?
Yeah, I'm sure it's taking long. We've got some, yeah, we're gonna call into them. We just, I don't know if it's their busy too, but I haven't heard much back from them. So unfortunately with the, lately with some other, other, uh, code stuff is kind of got pushed off, off. I'm paying attention to.
I'm sure you're gonna buy a few tires.
Yes, that was, I was talking to Mike about it today. We haven't done anything with that yet this year. We have been talking about it in the officers meeting. We've got that set up for them. It's, what is it? Pete's tie burn to come in and do an, an assessment of what we should, should, uh, be replaced and, you know, maybe a list for next year as well. Because last year we didn't change much for any tires and so far we haven't done anything with it this year. So.
Did we put a new fire pond in or did we put new hydrant in or something?
And the fires. That was for engineering.
That was engineering.
That was for.
The pond that we wanted to check the depth far and?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the next one. But this was the, this was error risk.
And when they come in, they tell you, they look at the pond and they, they give you an idea if we can pull it in?
Yeah, we will measure the depth for them as we can.
With a long stick and scoop of gear.
But what is the engineering's part of it? What do they count as far?
Mainly permitting, mainly permitting.
And it's a minute's water, it's a pipe.
And the hydrant aspect of it, to put together the spec so it can be bid. So obviously the hundred that we budget, I guess, we bump that one up. A hundred we normally budget is not, it's just if something runs over, it just gives us somewhere to post or something. You know, we're not, we're not gonna do much engineering for a hundred or a thousand.
Right.
See, I can see for.
There, there's, there's. We didn't spend much trust.
Eric on the line above that, your department supplies? Do you, do you feel that the four thousand is, is gonna be adequate?
Um, yeah, it leaves home.
What, what goes under that? Paper, printers?
Paper, stuff like that, yeah.
How, how do we get a fourteen? Not, not that you would necessarily know, but that's what's throwing it off.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not really sure how that was.
I believe that was my recollection was we, when we knew we were gonna be under budget, the department has put together lists of items and the board reviewed what they wanted to spend. So I don't remember specifically what that was, but I believe.
It was like everything.
Yeah, I believe it was.
Some hose and stuff, all kinds of stuff.
We'll spend it that way to keep from having an increase following here.
So if we don't fund that, that second position, then we're under, under last year. Is that right?
Correct.
But if we bump up part-time, you know, if we want to get a, another, maybe a part-time firefighter to help out during the weekdays, since that's what you guys were saying that. Oh, yeah, we definitely need, want to need, there are a few more people. Yeah, one of your deputies is working instead of another person. So. Right. Because they're, they're pretty limited on their hours.
Yeah.
Limited in the way of the homicide clinic, right?
Because there are many hours that you work.
Yeah.
But if we find a retired full-timer that can work twenty hours a week or something.
Are you saying that would give us the, the, the room with this new budget that he's presenting us?
It'll just get him up, you know.
Would, would that fit in with the budget?
Instead of, if we don't hire another full-timer, we could hire another part-timer and still be level funded or put in booth coverage, improve their, their flexibility.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what they brought up at our meeting. So.
Is that what you'd like to do?
That, that only improves it every day. That doesn't. Probably maybe two days a week or something. Right, but it doesn't improve any of the night coverage, really. You know, um, we can still have some part-congress. Right, for Dean, it's kind of a workfare on the week. I'm gonna be in again. Yeah, I'm gonna too right now, you know. But, you know, that's, what if we hire another one or find somebody?
Or some kind of an alternate shift or four, four to midnight or something that would help. Expand the hours that they're covered?
Potentially. I suppose. So we're doing forty hours on the full-time, obviously, and then the three-part timers, what are they, twenty each? Is that what we think?
About twenty.
Well, twenty each, right? Times three, right? So you're saying if we hired another part-timer with another twenty hours, that would only help us out during the day shifts, right?
Well, you'd still be on the department and they could come, you know, if there's a call at night, obviously, it's just, they'd be on the department, but their shift would be maybe a couple of days a week or so. Or three days a week and then take a week off or, you know, however they can do it. To keep under the numbers, but it doesn't affect the retirement.
I think it is pretty important that we try to get them to, to have enough help to cover more calls so they don't.
I mean, in a perfect world, I would like to see six full-time people.
That would be a perfect world, right?
Well, that's not, that's not even a perfect world. You know, that's a, that's a bare minimum. So it would cover your weekdays. That would, that would be, that would cover twenty-four, seven, seven days a week.
We'd go on every call if we had that.
Right, that way there, you're still gonna need the call departments, but the run-of-the-mill kind of calls that nobody gets up in the middle of the night for would be covered type of thing. So, I mean, like we discussed the other day, everybody wants to come out to the, see the big fight. They want to go out and fight that. It's the, it's the run-of-the-mill, go pick somebody up in the middle of the night. And part of this could be covered through ambulance fees as well. You know, right now we're running an ambulance that we don't charge for. So you're paying essentially an insurance fee for us to kind of sit on our hands and watch other people do the work. That's why when we asked you, do you want us to continue with the EMS? That's what that meant. You know, right now you're paying for a service to come in and cover this. And who knows where that price is gonna go with them. So, so there, um, you know, part of the, part of the ambulance fees that you could recover with that could help fund one, possibly two of those positions.
Are you saying we'd do away with that? We'd have our own with the seven, six guys full-time? We would have that ambulance on the road going to calls and we wouldn't have to pay the county for what we paid in that contract. That's what I'm saying. Because I'm looking at, you know, from two hundred and fifty thousand some point here, that was spending probably be seven hundred. Right, have that many, maybe even more, right, Michael?
It's a nice ballpark. Good number.
It's a good number, right? And how much should we pay for the ambulance? A hundred?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand.
For next year or for seventy?
For next year. Next year is seventy-five, but the year after could be what?
The other bid when we went to the county was what, three fifty?
Four hundred.
It was.
Yeah, it fluctuated.
Rescue Wing gave one, it was in the four hundreds.
Yep.
So.
I think we fully expect the county is gonna be up over three.
Yeah, as do I.
Yeah.
You know, yeah.
Well, but it just.
At the end of our contract?
Well, we're, we're just. It'd probably be a step increase too, but, but I think the next one after the next step increase is gonna be in the, in the six-digit kind of stuff, you know, hundreds of thousands. And then it's gonna go up. Because they, you know, it's, it's the way they run that, it's an enterprise fund. So if they don't make the money, they're coming back to us with a bill. This is the way I understand it. I may be completely wrong, but the way I'm understanding, the way their, their process goes, when their armpit money did, goes away, they're gonna charge real numbers. So.
Real numbers for the future years, we made sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, exactly.
Couldn't come and say, okay, we just reconcile for the.
No, I absolutely get that, yeah. And, and, you know, depends on what, you know, they may look at the next contract and know that their money's gonna dry up and only want to do a year contract. I don't know. Don't know what that's gonna look like.
Well, the only basis we have is what Rescue Wing threw out.
Right. Well, and Keane gave us the same, you know, spitball number. Keane gave us the same spitball number. They wouldn't commit to it, but they said they were in the same ballpark.
As Rescue Wing.
As Rescue Wing. So. I know it's gonna be a hefty bill. It just, if we could stave it off, it's gonna cost us a little bit in the short term to get this up and running.
It would be really nice to have the Thomas Swansea firemen and we had a solid fire department, but the amount of, we could be up over ten thousand people now. It's launching pretty soon. Couple of years, right? I mean, service is important, but I mean, that, that's gonna put us up over a million dollar, um, budget for the fire station, right, Mike?
You adding the numbers that you mentioned, yeah.
Yes, but that means we would handle our ambulance, we would, we would handle all our calls would be go out, the trucks would be going. Would have a regular solid fire department. And you think we would get the people if we did that?
If you can find people, firefighters.
Well, obviously that's gonna be a tough part, yeah, but, you know, people who want to, people right now want to commit to a, a something solid, you know? There's not that many people out there looking for part-time or even, you know, on-call type of stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I'm the one that believes in the times have changed. It's a new world. After COVID, everything changed and volunteer days are gone. And, and I'm a believer in Swansea eventually is gonna go down this road. It has to. I think it's inevitable. I, I agree with Bill mentioning it the other night and I have to agree with him a hundred percent. The day is gonna come. And, you know, the taxpayers, they want all their services and everything, but nobody wants a pony out. And that's the frustrating part. Everybody wants cheap taxes, but they want the best of services. And it's, you can't do both, you know? And unfortunately, we would take the beating. We would take the big beating on this, but it's a, it's a lot to think about. Because it's frustrating too, when I go out there and hear the road and people say, oh, it's Swansea, what's going on? They can't answer the calls. They can't answer the calls, you know? And it's frustrating when you have that, you hear that, you know, with a town our size. What other towns have full, were full-time? Like, does Jeffrey have a fight about that?
Jeffrey is a full-time chief right now.
Just a full-time chief?
Yeah, and a lot of, they, they, they run a lot of per diem. You know, they pay, they pay one guy a day to run follows with the chief. And that's, you know, that's a tough, that's just starting a day, much like we're running right now, same style. And he's starting to run into the same problems, you know?
What advantages?
Those days, can't, can't get, you know, enough people that, you know, so.
They also have a separate nonprofit ambulance, Jeffery Ridge Ambulance Organization. So it's, it's somewhat, it's somewhat similar.
You know?
Peterborough, Dr. Store, the Jeffrey, they, they do everything they do. And they're the keen of that area. They do ambulance out of town. So they have, I don't know, probably twelve, fourteen full-time. So it's apples and oranges.
And the tax rate to go with it.
And the tax, tax rate, much. And the ambulance fund that's in trouble.
So with this notion that you're asking here, this increase, right? What is that gonna do for us other than it's gonna keep the same people on? It ain't gonna really do nothing.
We're treading water.
We're treading water. So we're gonna be the same fire department with this new budget with a twelve percent increase, right? We're not gonna gain.
Twelve percent increase, you could at least fill in a full-time position.
Well, that's what I'm asking, you're saying no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, this budget is based on with the two full-time positions. If you take that one out, it'll be less than the, the twelve percent and then that'll be truly the current stack.
Oh, but wait a minute. So it's gonna still stay the same because the other three that are part-time is that full-time position? We're not talking about adding another.
No, no, it's on this page.
I got that.
Yeah, so you've got, you've got them, that's up over. You, you got the two, you got the second position, which with Eric gives you your full-time and you've got these three guys here and add it up, gives you this. So if it took, if, if that position wasn't funded, there'd be a sixteen thousand dollar reduction in the overall budget. Because your overall budget's up seventy-four, you'd take ninety away.
So back to what I was originally saying, it's basically gonna stay the same even with this increase?
No, no, because that will be an extra position. With the increase, there's an extra full-time position.
Okay, okay.
If you want a level budget, it would be level to what existing staffing is now.
Okay.
Existing people, not physicians.
But the actual budget would drop slightly.
Slightly.
I think it's, you know, it's certainly something we have to discuss, but I, I think you gotta have a plan and understand of what the expectations are.
Absolutely.
I certainly don't say you're wrong, but.
Yeah, it's, you know, I hate that, I hate to, you know, hate to be a bearer of bad stuff, but you know, it's kind of part of the job, you know? We, we look at the bad side of this rather than all the good.
We have to project.
And right.
What you think is.
We have to, we have to kind of predict what, the way things are going. And, uh, you know, right now, that's kind of the trend that things are going to.
So with, with Sly's suggestion with one or two part-timers as opposed to a full-time, is that something that, that is workable?
That would, yeah, to a point, you know, that would get us, you know, through part of the next year, you know, most of the next year. But again, we're still gonna be in that same boat. We're gonna just be, kind of just covering what we can cover. You know, it'll be nice for during the day, but, you know, not all our calls are during the day.
I think so. I, I don't, I don't know. The complaints are the complaints are gonna.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, yeah.
But the likelihood is you can cover a day for a call. The likelihood, i- it's unlikely that the nighttime call would be covered. Unless it's the, the roaring.
Right, the big ones. What I do, like I said, I, I, you know, I talked to this numerous times, even with the When I do, like I said, I I, you know, I talked to this numerous times, even with the. The deputies and assistant chief and. You know, we're all, the the average age of our department right now was. Somewhere close to sixty.
I thought you were gonna be a little higher.
Well, I mean, those guys are starting to drop off, which is nice, you know, they're doing voluntarily. But, you know, the the average age of our department right now is. Is there and. I don't want to hurt someone. Nor do I want to see, you know, one of these old guys get hurt, even older guys. I am one of those older guys. I'm including myself in that room. But, you know, when 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 the rest of this job, you're comparing yourself to a twenty year old. I am one of those guys. So. And we have numerous gentlemen in our department that are sixty and over, so. And ladies, I shouldn't say just gentlemen, ladies.
It still doesn't happen in my head, but what he's saying to me, because we're giving him a hundred hours now a week, okay? Now he's saying if we put six full timers on, that brings us two hundred and forty hours a week. And by going up a hundred and forty hours, he's saying we're gonna have that department covered twenty four seven. Seven days a week.
With six guys?
With six guys. Two hundred and forty hours versus a hundred hours.
Right, but.
Okay, so right now.
What are six people gonna be able to do twenty four seven? If there's a fire?
You're more not talking the big fire. You're talking, I'm telling you that. Two people on are gonna get you out. The day to day.
Every day.
Every day style calls. It's somebody to get the truck out on the road if it is a big call.
Yeah.
Like I said, the call company is not gonna go away. They need those people.
Well, that's the thing. We need them to step up. We need them to actually.
Right.
And we were hoping that.
Awful, awful hard to do.
Deputy chief go. Then some of these younger guys who didn't have an officer, you know, would now step up and go.
Right, so. But it's, you know, it hasn't happened yet.
And they don't just what the area of having six people and having it happen then.
Yeah, but I'm not talking six people on a shift.
No, no, I'm saying, you know, six, you know, twenty four seven.
It's just two people. There's two people are gonna cover every day.
Yeah.
And those, with that, you're gonna have. The mundane calls. It takes the stress off of the call company guys to be like, I don't have to get up in the middle of the night to go to this. You know, go pick up Mrs. Jones or, you know, to go answer a what could be a fire line, you know, simple fire line. You know, just a noise, you know, a bell ring from somewhere. Whereas. If you have two guys that are dedicated. They get there and they obviously. Ramp this up and, yeah, everybody's gonna, you know, understand that. But if it's still a nothing call, they're not worried about having to get up in the middle of the night and then start to get up the next morning, go do their, you know, their regular jobs. Cause that's what that's what a lot of the problem is. Everybody's telling me, they're gonna work, get a work. Their jobs and their time are more important to. More value, I shouldn't say more important, it's more value to them. To make sure they meet those. You know, this is. This is always the volunteer side. It was always nice because you could. Do a lot of that stuff and it, you know, you could get a lot of these things done, but it was fun. It is fun. But the requirements to. To do all this stuff now are tremendous compared to twenty plus years ago.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Yeah, we'll have to sit in terms like that.
Well.
I'm questioned out.
That's all I get from you.
Don't change his mind.
So you'll you'll be able to figure these, the the question with regard to the monitors?
Yes.
Is there any other equipment that we have on lease that's coming up?
No. That's always been kind of the big ticket one.
Yeah, the new lease that'll be coming up in a few years, I think, is the SCBA bottles.
Yeah, so it must have been quite a few years you didn't have that hit because you budgeted last year when you came under on that. And then the year before, I don't know.
So that's all used to it ran out sometime last year.
Yeah.
And. I wasn't completely very savvy to the budget part of it. I did ask Lisa towards. Couple of months ago about it. She called and said, oh, they just said you can keep paying the lease. It doesn't have to renew. It just keeps renewing itself. Kind of took it as, all right, well, that's. Things are good. It sounds like a plausible, you know, reasoning and.
You can keep paying it, but it's not budgeted.
Right, right. And then, yeah, not knowing it wasn't completely budgeted for. Unfortunately, now I know, so. Or fortunately, now I just.
Just seems like there's something else.
Is that one?
Yeah, just if if it wasn't budgeted for, it would have come in. I mean, we are on three thousand now. If the actual was forty four the year before.
It wasn't posted there. It was posted to debt service before.
Oh, it was, okay.
So that's what was told. It wasn't in there at all.
Gotcha.
I'm to your answer.
Very well, he's here just to give kudos, recudos to him. I really appreciate it. Chief Mattson, also Kevin Westman helped him out with the building department transition, so he's been great.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
That was Webb this morning.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what they, somehow they did some sort of, it's some sort of bolt. Their pump started up and ran, but didn't spray water anywhere, so.
Nice.
Tripped tripped the alarm and didn't do anything, so. No water, no icing, no damage.
Yeah. That's good.
Yeah.
It's a benefit.
Yep.
What happened?
No, Webb's Webb's fire line went off about six this morning.
Oh.
So. For whatever reason, their their sprinkler bomb kicked on, but didn't pump any water anywhere.
And that alerted the alarm.
But it trips the alarm as well, yeah, so, yeah.
Talking about irrigation, sprinkler, the sprinklers.
No, the sprinklers in the building, yeah.
And no water came out?
No, it didn't. It it's a wet system, so it's designed to be have water in the pipes. So it really just pressurized in the pump and that's where it stayed. Didn't trip any of the other openings to flow water, so.
That would be terrible, right?
Cause that's a pretty substantial bomb, so.
Wow.
How many gallons do they have in their systems?
They have a hundred and ten thousand out there buried in the in the parking lot, yeah.
Well, that would have been catastrophic.
Yeah, so. Thankfully, the shelves aren't full yet either, so.
But they're bringing in inventory.
They are bringing in every day.
How do they fill that? What's that? How do they fill that?
John Matthews.
John Matthews, yeah.
Traps. Yeah, Dr. Travers.
Yeah, they bought. Came bring in and put it in?
They bought water and and. Pumped it in.
Five thousand gallons at a time.
Yep.
Wow.
Twenty something trips. Yeah.
Wow.
Then they emptied it for the test. And then refilled it. So.
Well, thanks, Eric.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you all are doing. Good time for new business. Acquisition of town, private town of approximately three point three acres from Southwest Community Services. Parcel at twenty eight Main Street.
What do you want? What are you looking at me for? You're looking at me to make a motion to.
Yeah, there's a few dollars in there.
Yeah.
Picture red out.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My mind was still at the beverage.
Stage four.
Stage four, got it. Okay, yeah, I read that. Yeah, I don't think the motion net. Go ahead with that.
Second. Motion, second, to accept the donation of three point three acres from Southwest Community Services parcel at twenty eight Main Street, map one ten lot seventy. To be added to map one ten lot seventy one, authorized expenditure of up to sixty five hundred dollars for a transaction cost of three thousand two hundred and fifty from the conservation land acquisition. Capital reserve fund and three thousand two hundred and fifty from the fire station's capital reserve fund. Anything further? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Health trust insurance renewal. I was curious, there was a notation there about long term disability in one of the headers. It wasn't going after it. It was.
In one of the forms?
Yeah.
Their things?
Yeah.
Might have had it listed as something that you could have placed, but.
Is that what it, yeah, it was right at the top.
Life.
Said what? Long term disability coverage, there is no rate change for Y twenty twenty five. It's on page four or five. In the health trust. And then I saw like, as Jim said, that you're researching that.
That's what I saw.
Right up under health trust. You know, this was page, page four.
Back in the letter. Oh, so I think that's just a form letter that they sent. So if we did.
They plug in the blank at the end. I got you.
Yeah, they're just telling you about what happened with, well, yeah, the long term disability rates didn't change for us.
It was zero beginning.
And it is, yeah, something we're exploring. You're still waiting for a call for grace. So we're we're gonna wait.
Are the HR director for Swansea demanding a call back?
They probably called her. She was supposed to Nashville, so she was gonna. Uh, so we're gonna.
Were in Nashville today?
For the job fair.
And then you came home. God bless you.
So I'm kidding you.
Good job, Mike.
She's so tired. We gotta get her home.
That's right. No more questions. Motion to operate. So we're gonna wait to actually sign it until we find out what's gonna happen in the long term, but this at least lets me know that the rates are finalized, so she can get her open enrollment paper started. Get that out soon.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second. Further? For a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes, have it. You are authorized, Michael.
Thank you.
Mass complete street implementation grant letters of.
So we talked about both these grant applications a couple of weeks ago now, so they have dropped the letters for both of them. We appreciate our board consensus to go forward. Inside them.
Works for me. No signing. Subs this. Any old business?
Uh, work on the Grange roof began this week and they're losing any time.
Oh, they're not. Good thing it's nippy. They're hustling, yeah. administrative update.
Well, we have a thing to mention at this point.
Correspondence.
Um, I don't know if it's either one, but keeping an eye on some of those other events that I listed in here. I've got a few rip and cuttings for folks who are interested in next Monday with the North Swansea Commissioners. You've got all those other events on your calendar, rate change.
The ribbon thing. I got the liquor store. What was the other one?
Twelve Berry Lane tomorrow.
What's that all about?
Ten thirty. Kelly's gonna be there. Ribbon gun.
We go there.
Twelve Perry Lane. What is the ribbon? What was twelve Perry Lane?
The multifamily next to Gamal's.
Oh, wow.
Get your tie out.
Ten thirty? You're gonna be there? Sly, you going?
Yeah.
You don't, you don't need me.
Yeah.
Billy's.
Your sisters are big.
You are not a liar.
Are you kidding?
He will not be there.
I'll be there.
He goes where Kelly, he'll be there. That's right, Kelly.
Big fan of Kelly. George should be there. Yep, Chad Brandon.
I I sit out to the liquor store.
You're looking for the freebies.
Make sure you check what you can accept for gifts before you go down any stairs. We don't need to be hit the trouble.
Public input.
Well, I thought I saw a hand up. He was just stretching.
Quiet, I'm in.
Think they're better this week. We'll have any non-public sessions. Wow. Let's make it on the road. Make the most intense drives. I wasn't all in favor.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.